This conference will now be recorded.
You listen at the door.
Yeah, this night.
Please.
She's not just, she's not.
I don't know.
There we go.
Get out of here.
There you go.
She's.
Yeah, I don't, I like it.
Do you like that?
And I used to preach. There's always the easiest, you need a drink of water. We should have, like, I was in one of the waters. We're drinking, you know, work rate, so we're either them or the other. You know, just a stricter.
Sure.
I now call this work session to order. For tonight, we're going to be talking about our budget work session. We have the different department heads here. Be prepared to answer questions, should we have any for you. We're going to call on our Assistant City Administrator right now to sort us out.
All right, well, good evening. We have just a short presentation.
Oh, wait a minute. Do we need roll call, Jason?
Yes. Well, madam, we can.
Let's go ahead and do roll call.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
Thank you. Now we turn it over to our Assistant City Administrator.
Okay. So just a couple of little things that we'll go over here at the beginning. This is the budget preview. Well, actually, complete budget work session. So as you guys heard last week, I call it the decision tree. So you'll see a spreadsheet, like we've done in the past, where there are different items and whether they've been, at this point, included in the budget or whether they have not been included and how it affects that current fund. So we'll go over those for council's decision and direction. And then at the end, we'll have just a couple of things in summary and the next steps. A couple of priorities and things to keep in mind are balancing revenues and expenses. We're tracking financial trends to maintain the budget flexibility. And then sustaining fund balances, so by prioritizing long-term stability with a focus on the general fund. Also maximizing our value for citizens. We want to ensure responsible use of our resources to provide the best possible services. And also, we want to stay focused on these priorities. We continue a strong tradition of fiscal responsibility, ensuring a stable, a sustainable future. Like we'll discuss tonight with the general fund and all of our funds, how we can maintain their fund balance for each one of those funds. Couple of outlooks as we go through this. Despite the challenges outlined in the last presentation that I gave for fiscal year 26, the proposed budget remains achievable. There are some difficult discussions and decisions that will be required. And they often center on the what can't be funded instead of making it. We overlook the obvious, which is what is getting funded. So don't get hung up in that. This is, I will say from a personal experience, you know, as we went through this and as we've been working on it, I got hung up a lot on that we couldn't get certain things done and had to look at the bigger picture. So from my experience, that is a very important thing to remember. And this isn't just about what gets left out. It's about making intentional choices that align with our priorities and serve the community effectively. So bring the presentation and the spreadsheet over, because this looks familiar. And we'll start off with the general fund. If you look at the, at this chart, we have our revenues and the resulting fund balance. So as we go through it, the description of the item is over here on the left where I have the cursor. The ranking, and the ranking is from our first budget work session. The amount that's included in the draft. And then this, these check marks here, if it's checked, it's in the budget. We can uncheck it and it'll show us what it looks like. And then this will, up here is what the result of it. So our current net is, as we're, the way the budget sets at the moment, is this is the amount that we are spending of reserves. And this is a number that came in today and that was added in with one item. So that's the updated net. But if you still look over here at the resulting fund balance, so that is still where our current fund balance, or the current net with it, with the changes. And then this is the resulting percentage of our, of our fund balance. If you guys remember, our policy talks about thirty-five percent to seventy-five percent should be our fund balance. And those are the ranges. One of the things to think about down at the thirty-five percent range is that's about what we need to cash flow the organization and the city to keep operating on a regular basis. So that's why our goal is up closer to and what we've been running at. Last year, I think we ran it around sixty-one percent. So at the current, the way it sets, we would be more at fifty-seven percent. And the last several years, when we look back at it, our target has been around that sixty-five percent. Any questions so far? Everybody following along? There's a lot of numbers and a lot of stuff, so don't hesitate to ask questions. As Ms. Bogus said, the department heads are here to answer any questions as we go through it. So this is meant to be conversational and a good discussion. The biggest thing is, is that to make sure that we've got everybody's vote taken when we look at changing something is that we ask that we get a consensus on it. So as discussed before, with revenues, we projected a two percent increase, or actually a four percent increase, but two percent on property taxes. So, sorry, let me just make sure that we've got people muted here. I apologize. So when we look at this, the, if you guys agree with that two percent, or I'm sorry, four percent on our sales and use tax and two percent of property tax, we would continue with those items checked. If you didn't, if you notice that if I unchecked that, how it affects the top portion of it, how it affects our net revenue and our current revenue and our fund balance. Make sense? Any questions on the revenues?
So you're saying that those two, that we have not adopted those as part of the budget?
No, they are in this draft of the budget.
Okay.
It's the four percent. We've just broke it down by two percent each, just in case we wanted to make a change to.
Well, but, I mean, there's a difference between a four percent increase and two, two percent. There's two different sources of revenue, right?
No, the sales and use tax are there together as that first line right there. And so that's listed out as two percent. And then there's an additional two percent to make up the four percent.
Oh, okay.
Uh-huh. And now the property tax is listed out separately as.
So you're, we're saying there's going to be a four percent increase in sales and use tax?
Yes. And a two percent increase in.
Why is that parenthetical in this? I don't understand it.
When we, when we list it that way, it shows that, through the way Excel works, it shows it as a, as a, as an income, as a credit to it. So it is adding the money to it.
I get that, but I don't quite understand why we broke it in, why it didn't just list it as a four percent increase. Are you saying it already?
What we're saying with that is that.
That it already occurred?
No, no, these are, this is all projected for the year. What that is, is that it is breaking it out so you can make the decision if you didn't.
Oh, okay.
If you didn't agree with me, that four percent.
If we weren't happy with, if we thought, nah, not going to be four percent.
They need to reduce it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry if I didn't explain it.
Yeah, I get it.
Make sense so far?
It's that way to make the spreadsheet work.
Yes. There is some spreadsheetisms with certain things that we'll go through.
I get it.
If you have a question, please ask.
So we normally just do two percent, that's for the years past. Are we seeing trends that we're thinking?
We have, we have done, last year we did four percent as well.
Okay.
And we're trending higher than that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, any other questions? Okay. So if we go on to the personnel and related costs, that we broke down many items here. So as we go through that, we can take and look at, again, each item. And each department head is here, so I can talk about the item as best I can as we go through it. If you have any questions, please let us know. And again, the department head will come out, or come up and discuss it. So on here, we had a market increase for the HR specialist. We had the network system administrator, or system assistant, going from part-time to full-time. Currently, that's a part-time, one of the positions is part-time. We have a market adjustment for a couple of the folks in IT. And that is the increase in there that was included. And again, as you see off to the side where my cursor is, those check marks mean that it is included in the current draft. So there was a request for a GIS field asset locator. That was not included. And again, if you see the amounts on the left, that's the amount of, that it would, was requested. And then here in the middle, again, is the amount that would be included in the budget. If you see just the no sign, then that means it's not in there as well. That helps you out. The addition of three firefighters, that was not included. Adding the training officer, that was not included. The police hiring incentive, that was included. That's been done for several years. Building and code certification raises. That is to continue with the program of getting our staff more certified in that area. And then cemetery transition crew leader, this was having someone help transition the crew lead. Additionally, with more part-time hours. And that position's been going on for a while, so we have not included that. Any questions so far? Moving on to the vet and vet tech. We've listed this out as several different items. But if you remember, this is part of the animal services presentation. So what we have here is initially is the cost, which you'll see is the vet and vet tech, the vet supplies and the equipment. And then again, in the parentheses, is the donation. So again, these are revenues coming in from a donation of equipment. There's two that are pledged. And then income from it, also income from, and we broke those down by different, different sources. So we have with the major revenue with it, then also the spay and neutering revenue, euthanasia, the vet visits, and also the increased medical costs. So does that make sense to everybody of how that's broken down? And that is all included in the budget. Any questions on it so far?
The vet, the vet and vet tech are coming in about fifty thousand dollars more than what we saw in our work session back in January. Are we, is this a more accurate number or are we? Then we said it was one twenty-five and it would fund itself.
So when we. Something to consider when we went through these, and I should have explained this at the beginning, is that as we went through the, in the presentation I gave last week, is that we had gone through each one of these budgets with the departments during their hearings. And we did get more accurate numbers many times during the department hearings.
I think what you're looking at is the vet, the vet and vet tech for this stuff.
Okay. Okay. Maybe, yeah. Yeah.
If you highlight that whole section, the net amount.
Sixty-four.
So the net sixty-four thousand is good.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions on it?
We didn't start the revenue until, I think, six-one.
June first, yeah.
Well, with the revenue, this is what I originally presented. Taking into consideration that we'll take time to hire the first, they give the rounds, ready, and the equipment set up, we could have a similar worth of revenue from what I originally presented.
Trying to give you that best estimate of what we could come up with of how it would work, knowing that it wasn't going to start right off with that.
What was the gift, a hundred thousand dollars? I can't remember the cat's name, Sadie or what was Sophie? That's pretty good for me. Pretty close. So how, where's, is that in that three hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred thirteen?
These are. Right there.
So I, I can't remember, or is that, that's not in, the equipment's not in parentheses.
Right, because that's, that's the expense of the equipment. And then we have listed where the revenue is. So these donations for equipment.
The parentheses are donations.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, are we going to use Sophie's gift, all or part of it, to generate revenue on an annual basis to offset? Or are we just going, I thought we talked about that. I can't remember if we're going to do that, or we're just going to burn it?
So there's two questions with that one. It is approximately a hundred thousand dollars, but it has to be spent on anything that benefits cash. So the twenty-three thousand is what it had already earned and was sitting there. And she had said, silly, in terms of.
Okay.
Had said that she would put that board, surgery equipment, so it could be used for cash. But the hundred thousand will be still sit there and it will pay off monthly the interest of all those accounts.
And we're just going to work off that interest from that point. Okay. All right. That answers my question.
Okay. Moving on with some of the wage rates on the public safety pay plan. We've broke this down by fire and police, since their, their raises are a little bit different. The way we've been doing the merit system. So the police sworn step, this is the amount. It's included in the draft. The police market adjustment, which was rated number one, this is the amount requested. And you've seen that be a little bit different number, but this has been broke out now to include the step separate. And that is included in the budget. There's an alternate set there that would be the starting wage moving to fifty-three instead of fifty-five. Now this amount, basically, imagine that the starting wage is at fifty-five and that has, that amount includes moving everybody up that same proportional amount. This amount here also is the same way, only moving the proportional amount at the fifty-three. And then the step is separate. Fire, this is also in the step, the step here in that amount, is included in it with the fire shift COLA included in this as well. And that is at the same rate as the other portions of the city on the COLA. And then our non-public safety and non-sworn police, this is that, again, we had talked about a one percent COLA and a two percent merit set aside. And that is also listed out here separately. And we can always go back to, I know sometimes it's, it's taking in a lot of information and we're going through it. So if you have any questions, again, please don't hesitate to stop me. Non-personnel costs, so we've included the cyber insurance, the Sophos monitoring. That did have a five percent increase. Then also, we need to upgrade our Office 365 from Exchange. Also having a secure FTP server to exchange information, those larger documents and those types of things that we run into on all different departments. But this allows us to do it in a safer way. Geo locators, there was four proposed, and we have added two in the recommendation. Then also, high voltage detection. The next few items are through the fire department, so if you have any questions. Chief and Deputy Chief are both here. So there's the high voltage detection, it was requested for five. We included two. And then we have several other items here that were not included. The CMC cap toe, the Petzl ASAP, the CMC clutch, the fast rescue board, and then, excuse me, mass casualty gear. Those were not included. Do you have any questions on those?
Fire rescue, is that just a backboard? Has what's speed on each, screwing on each truck now? I don't get it.
SCAD.
What?
It's a SCAD. Go ahead, Chief, do you have more information on it?
It's a ripcord down by some firefighters and stuff that have broken into, or SCADs. These are plastic that they slide on, these allow air to go.
Oh, okay.
And be able to pull and rescue firefighters or.
Yeah. Okay. We don't have those now?
You know, we currently have either like a backboard that we can, like, we can use to make the air. But it doesn't allow for somebody to slide, they set an angle. And the SCAD boards are nothing but a, it's a whole piece of plastic that we put somebody on it and it drags, it's basically a drag sled, is what it is.
Okay.
Matt, you ought to go out to the hospital and talk to them out there. I'm just telling you from experience, they use a, one of those, it's like a mattress. They put, slide you from one bed to the other. And you, you as a patient can demand to keep that. And if you don't want to keep it, they throw them away. No, this is plastic. I have one. I kept mine. Yeah, you, they put it underneath you and then they, they actually air it up. And then they can just slide you off the bed, off your bed, right onto the, to the operating table and then.
Is there something else survive inside a fire?
Well, plastic wouldn't survive inside a fire.
So the ripcord is specifically designed to break down correlative heat. So this board is designed to strap a downed firefighter in and drag him out.
I understand.
It is a hardwood, it's a rigid plastic.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, you could, you could always go look at them and they'd work, they work, if they don't. But I know they, I said, I said to them, well, what happens if you don't, you don't want it? And they said, well, we just throw them away. They use them one time.
I'm sorry I keep saying this, it's important to me. So that we have two on each truck now?
No, we only have the SCAD boards, which are revolting, they're not, they're not a hardwood.
Oh, okay, so the fast rescue board is what we're trying to get. We have the SCADs on trucks now. Okay. I'm going to write that down as something that, let's go down through this.
Yeah.
Maybe there's something else. There could be other things. We're going to stop at the end and.
Sure, we can definitely stop at each hunt. The Knox Box Fund, we have reduced that. In speaking with the chief, it's kind of fallen off. We also have the independent station toning module, or modification, I'm sorry. That is in the budget and that allows for toning to be separated at each station. So dispatch can tone one station as opposed to both at the same time. So there's times that only one station needs to be toned. The Revolution Conference and the Fire Investigation Certification and the FM AF, I'm sorry, the FM AM Conference has not been included. Any questions on those? We have the smoke detectors and smoke, carbon monoxide detectors included. Those are something that the fire department has done for the last several years. We did not include ties. That was a part of their request with making part of their inventory. We talked to them about the T-shirt replacement. We were able to reduce that down originally, four thousand was requested. We have it in at two thousand. And we also have long sleeve shirts in. Extracation tool compartment tools, that was ranked number seven at forty thousand. That was not included. And then a computer for the brush truck was not included. What is included is water rescue suits, four of those. Actually, I'm sorry, two of those are included. And then we also had some requests for some different sizes of hose here and those amounts here. And those were not included. The FLOCK Falcon License Plate Reader Maintenance Agreement, that was at thirty-three thousand. That was included. That's the second year of it. Then the next few items are training at the Police Department, the Tactical Warrant Service, the SRT Advanced SWAT for new investigator, or new members, the Death Investigation Class, the Armored Rescue Vehicle, that would be tied to the Special Response Vehicle, the Crime Resolution Drug Investigation Training, and the Interview and Interrogation in the SRO Conference. Those items were all included in there. But what was not included was the Missouri Investigation Conference. Any questions so far? The Basic Narcotics Investigation Class was included. The Marksmen Observer and the K-9, the NAPWDA National Workshop for K-9, that was included. The School of Police Staff and Command was not included. The West Point Model Leadership Training for new sergeants, that covers a couple of them, one to two for that cost. And then SRT Grenadier Training, that was not included. Additional SRT qualification training was included. Any questions so far?
Okay, I'll go here. I, you know, I might have been, I was gone that Saturday afternoon because I coached those girls. So maybe that's why, so this isn't ringing a bell to me. But, and I'm assuming Chief Laurie's prioritized this. But Marksmen, Marksmen's Observation versus just an investigation, one was seventeen hundred and one was five fifty. And I just, what's, why, why did one, I would think that Investigation Seminar might be more important than the Marksmen's Observation.
Marksmen Observer is for the Special Response Team. So they would have the rifles out giving cover and information. It's more of a specialized school. So the, like the Investigation Schools and things like that, they'll have several students in there and they just, they don't, they don't cost as much.
You've been through this and you, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's.
The Marksmen Observer, I mean, the SRT, some of the SRT stuff is, it's a newer, newer program and a newer skill set that we've been getting and developing. So that one's a little newer, but the, the normal training, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't want to eat up all our time, though. Thank you.
That's okay. And you will see items, as I had talked about, when we went through the budget hearings with the department heads, they also prioritize every item in their, in their specific budget. So that's why you would see things. So I actually didn't want you to think that I was throwing out new things.
No, I didn't. And I see, I, I had to be gone that one, half of that Saturday and I was worried that I'd miss it.
Yeah, so if you see, if you see the.
I got done at one-thirty and I think I was only, I was gone at noon, so.
If you see it, the ranking here where I have that highlighted, that means that it came, that ranking came from that January session. If you don't see a ranking in there, then that means it came out of the department's budget here. Does that make better sense?
Can we go back to the fire on some of those trainings?
Sure.
I'm just seeing that there's a lot of trainings we're proving for PD. I just want to look a little more closely about, on some of the fire trainings.
That's exactly what I was thinking. Seems like there's a lot of training for the police and that's great, but not a lot of training for the firefighters. Thank you for catching that, too.
So I guess I'm just curious, some of the reasons why we didn't include some more of those trainings. I'm definitely not an expert on any of that stuff. So could you help me understand some of that, please? But there.
So we looked at the different trainings and their, each one of their ranking orders. And based it on that. If there's something that you'd like me to change, then I can, I can change it.
What, ten or fifteen thousand dollars worth of training, approximately?
Yep. Both departments have considerable training.
Yeah. You know, we're about to build another fire station, we're about to build a training center. I'd like to see some more training be given to our guys.
This is not necessarily all of the training that's in the budget. We've only picked out some of the things for this year. So there was more training in the budget that's not.
Yeah, this isn't every item that was in their, their training. This is their lesser items, yeah. So usually, it's the lower end of their priorities.
Okay. So Chief, where did you, where do you, where do you put some of these rankings at?
Yeah, I couldn't get, please.
So in our budget hearings, we had, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten items that we had put in for training. A couple of those were for the Training Officer Implementation that was removed, so we, that one wouldn't come in. Um, a couple of those were for the Training Officer Implementation that was removed, so we, we, that one wouldn't come in. Um, some of our training for that was for, um, an aerial inspection, uh, consumables for our live fire training. Um, some of the classes that we asked for and ordered that we had put them in there were basically the Revolution Conference, uh, Fire Investigation Certifications and, uh, the State Fire Marshals Association. Um, and then basically, our biggest one out of that whole group was for the current, um, seven people that we currently have in our, uh, Fire One and Two Class for our six new hires. A large chunk of that was sent them through E M, E M T class.
Okay.
So, looking at what we asked for, um, we, I mean, so these classes that we're sending them to are, are ongoing CEUs and credits for classes that they have. Um, we do have a, a, a number of fire investigators, but we don't have a lot of them on each shift. So, that was one of the reasons why we were asking for the, um, Fire Investigator Certification, so we can add, add additional investigators into the class. So, um, the Revolutionary Conference is basically a conference of the lake. And we send a number of people up to do, up to that class, it's great information. And some of them, I believe, are certified classes, is that correct? They get CEUs for their, for their training, their training certificates, if they're training, if they have the, um, the Training Officers and Instructors and those, those items. So, out of the, uh, one, two, three, there's nine of them. And then the, then another, uh, large section of that is for our, um, Target Solutions and our R M S, which is our report management software, which was in on there, they, they were, that was what we discussed in our budgetary meetings. So, yeah, and then a large chunk of, of our training budget was, is, is still sitting up there.
Okay.
How many fire investigators do we have? How many certifications do we currently have?
I believe we have seven. We have seven members that are certified fire investigators. I, don't quote me on that, I didn't actually count the numbers. Um, I can get that number to you, but, um-
Is that low or average or?
Lower than I'd like. Um, if you have, the, between the three shifts, you don't even have three per shift. If there's three people off, they all happen to be investigators, then we don't have anybody to investigate, which then requires us to call somebody in to come and investigate that fire, which causes us to, to run overtime.
And it's nine hundred and seventy-five per person?
Um, yes.
Yes, for three.
It is an eighty-hour class. I am correct, it's an eighty-hour class, yeah.
So, if adding one of those, would that be helpful?
Anything would be helpful.
Okay. How does anybody else feel about that?
You know, where are you, I'm, I was-
Number sixty-seven, the Fire Investigator Certification. They're asking for three at nine seventy-five each. And so, do you think seven, is that-
I believe I have seven, yeah.
So, I'll tell you where I'm at, uh, Council One. I'm thinking one fire rescue board might be more important than training. Um, I know we've got, I mean, for two-
The fast, the fast rescue?
The fast boards, yeah.
So, we're looking at sixty-two?
Well, there's two at twenty-six, so we end up with, if we could get one on one, one machine, I don't know. Um, the boards, by the time, of course, it's a fast rescue board, you could have, I don't know. I don't want to, I don't want to get down that far. I don't want to sail down that far to that level. These guys have figured it out.
The boards and the, and the trainings are, what, fifteen total? What, can we see what it looks like, what the fund of a balance looks like?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's-
Percentage, what, does that take us down?
So, you are looking at what I have highlighted at the moment?
Yeah, we are looking at the fast rescue boards.
Okay.
We are looking at the Revolution Conference, the Fire Investigators Conference, the FM AM Conference.
So, sixty-six, sixty-seven and sixty-eight?
Yeah, thank you, Council, uh, Council of the Budget.
So, that's your-
Yeah, and they're relatively, oh, is sixty-seven?
Did the fund balance change at all?
It didn't change at all. I mean, the, the percentage didn't touch.
Okay.
What's everybody else thinking? I mean, it doesn't look like we're also going to be able to fund the three extra people that they prioritized.
Yeah, that's good.
Of the, of the different items that we're discussing right now, Chief, which ones would you put as, as your top?
The training.
Training over the boards?
Yes.
The training. So, are you considering the conferences, training as well, or which specifically, which ones are you talking about?
So, the, the conferences, although they're not like a hands-on, though, they are, there are some courses that are hands-on. Um, there's, I believe you, there was a vehicle education, um, education course, there was a number of hands-on classes. So, it's not just like sitting in a room and, and having somebody preach to you. Um, they do have those, but generally we send them to more hands-on classes, um, advanced classes, um, that they, they go to. Um, and then again, they also tie into, um, adding into our, their CEUs, their Continuing Education Unit that they need for the key to certifications, whether it be a high-end class or investigator class or instructor class. They get to use those CEUs, so we don't have to send them to another class to keep up with the CEUs.
Chief, what, and then we'll, if we can move them higher?
Please.
Yes, please.
Uh, we'll send two to a tech rescue class, we'll send two to an extrication class. I think three of them ended up in a live fire class. Uh, and then a handful of, uh, E M T winter classes.
So, they're three days, you, you can pick a class on, you get to take classes on all three days. So, you can pick on a Friday, if you just want an in-service class or an E M T class. And then they have training classes over the weekend, but they're multiple classes.
Are there other conferences that are not listed on here that you have guys that do attend?
No, I mean, the, this is what we, now, we do have guys that will attend conferences. Um, Chief Shaw attends conferences, but it doesn't come out of our budget.
Okay.
Matt, would you un, I'm sorry, would you uncheck sixty-six and let's see what happens up there?
If you look at the sum down there, it's fifteen thousand and twenty-five, uncheck sixty-six.
Yeah, unchecked, yeah.
It's changing.
Unchecked. Mm-huh. Okay.
Is that something that you would like me to change?
Uh, Council, on, um, would we like for sixty-six to be checked off? And sixty-two and sixty-seven and sixty-eight be checked on?
I'm fine with it all being checked on, really. I mean, it didn't change anything.
Well, it's, it's just, it's, check it, but we can't check it, man.
There's going to be other things that we may add or take off later that's going to equal it.
Yeah.
Five thousand dollars.
Mm-huh. So, the, uh, the Revolution Conference, by sending the six firemen to that, it could save money for Continuing Education Credits for?
Oh, yeah, that's-
Okay. I just want to be clear.
We try to pick and choose, we try to pick and choose what classes we send. There are, there are hundreds of classes out there.
It's beneficial on more levels than just going to a conference, because, okay.
Yes.
Well, what do you guys think?
I'm okay with it.
And I will tell you that the Fire Marshals Association covers all of the, the FM, FM AM, um, that's for the three fire marshals, that's for our three inspectors, that includes Chief Shaw, um, Jamie Volk and Jacob Carver. Those cover all of their, basically, their CEUs for the year, that is, that is correct, definitely. So, like, we send them to that one class and they don't have to do, they don't have to go another, um, symposium, they don't have to go to anything.
Is it pretty equal in cost?
Do what?
Is it equal if we send them to the other stuff? Is it, is it cheaper by quite a bit, or is it not the same?
If, if we send them to one, it's cheaper because we don't have to pay for hotel rooms for multiple classes.
So, other ones, they would have to go and stay? Okay.
Depending on the class. I mean, they could still have, they could be a one-day class. But then I've got them out of the office, going to that one class or going to this class and, and whatever.
Okay.
So, how would the council like to move forward from here? Leaving everything checked, unchecking anything, or just all in favor of leaving it as it is right now, checked?
I would like to make a motion to leave it with them all checked as we have it right here. I think, let me make sure, sorry, this is, yes. I would like to make a motion to include all of the things that we just added. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I agree.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have, we've got a motion and a second to leave things checked as we've just done, which is including number sixty-two, sixty-six, sixty-seven and sixty-eight. Anyone oppose to that?
I just have a question about, Matt, on the sixty-six, um-
That's the Revolution, which one is that one?
Yeah, the Revolution Conference.
Okay, Revolution. So, the numbers are in your, from the book.
And you got, you got it six times, okay, would you, are you set, set and stoned with six, or can you cut that back to four?
We could cut it back to four, um-
I mean, would that be okay?
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think we need to finish the, the motion that's on the floor.
So, this is, I'm asking a question.
Well, but, and I understand that, but isn't that, do we need to finish the motion before we go into discussion on that? Oh, sorry, confused, sorry. I just wanted to check. I know sometimes we get confused with, uh, when we're trying to, like, we're going to get, we get sidetracked sometimes on things and go with them, you know.
So, we've got a motion and a second on the floor, and so we need to vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any questions?
Councilman Hill, I will look at that and I will get back to you, because we still have a couple more meetings before this is all said and done, right? I can, I can bring that back to you if you'd like.
Well, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to hurt your count, but, you know, um, if, if, if you need six, you need six. If you need eight, now's the time to speak up.
Well, I would prefer to stick to six, not eight. I mean, I would prefer sending everybody, but it's not fiscally responsible.
I get it.
Um, the, the thing that, and the reason that we stuck on six, or we, we chose six, is because that's about the number of people that we can just go and still have enough people to cover a shift to come back and work, so we're not working short. Any more, then we run into an issue with, with filling those seats, or filling the seat on the trucks. Um, I would, I would prefer to stick to six, if that's, if you were asking that, that's what I would prefer.
That, that's what I'm asking, okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Let me go away now.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had moved down to, I believe about this point in here. Uh, yeah, actually, we had gotten right here to drones as first responders. That was ranked number five, and we don't currently have that in the budget. Callio, which was a, uh, request for a crew, uh, to phone out to help with investigations, that was not included. Um, the police-
Matt, can I interrupt you, please?
Sure.
So, why did we take, remind me of the drones as first responders out?
Uh, we had taken it out due to the cost and trying to fit additional items in.
Okay.
And I, again, was it, it was, how many, they were going to be located on fire station and police station?
On fire stations.
G three?
Yeah.
Four, two on each fire station. And then we could convert a drone we already have with the, uh, with the technology that allows us to fly it out of sight. But currently, we can only fly a drone where we can see it. Let's do the company, we could get the technology that we require. So, we effectively have three, but the two would be stations, uh, on each fire station, that could, that could all take in, correct? One on each. There's, there's two drones, one in fire station, one in the central fire and one in fire. Well, the potential third, that is ours to be included, if that makes sense.
You made a pretty persuasive argument when I was here, that this combined with the fact that we struggle so much with recruiting. And I, and you, my recollection is, you were clear in saying that it did replace a fire, or a policeman, excuse me, fireman. But-
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're in a situation where we've got to think outside the box.
Mm-huh.
Uh, again, could we have one drone instead of three, or two drones instead of three? Would, would that make, and you've probably already made these decisions, but-
Well, we, we have looked at the two models because it would, it'd get the coverage in the city a little better. If, uh, but again, I mean, finances are, are what they are, so Commander Elwood, do you know what one would be? I don't know if we discussed just the price of one.
Yeah, I think to your point here, the issue is going to be how far we can take it outside of minus five. So, typically those flavors, you could, you know, either a three, three to five mile radius around with a drone stationed at. So, the issue would be with central fire or the, um, or the fire bench board covering the opposite side of the city where the two fire stations are located and the three to five mile radius, if you have any little house.
I'd just like to get it started.
I understand.
Even if we didn't have coverage and it took us two years to get there, or three years to get there, it, it, that's what's in my head, but you guys have thought about that. I'll leave this alone if you'll tell me to, or I'll make a motion to try to fund one of them or two of them.
That's what it looks like with it in. So, there's without it, there's with it.
Okay, we'll still on for a while, we'll talk about it.
Okay, so next in is the police car, uh, the cameras, replacement of those, at, uh, twelve of them. It includes the purchase and then a grant. And then it also is the police car radars, which includes the purchase and the grant, uh, as well. All of those are included, the expense and the revenue. Uh, two Dodge Durangos are included in that with the wraps and the mounts. The tax sale property purchases this year are not included. Um, a plaque for Jenny James, we've been in pros, approach to, um, as we've done with some other markers around Sedalia, um, in memory of Jenny, Jenny James Stadium, that has been included in the budget. A plasma cutter for, um, building maintenance has been included. Um, keypads for several of the different doors that are going in and out of to secure them, um, in different interior offices. Originally, the discussion was ten thousand, it was, it put in the budget at seven thousand. Um, there's been a request to replace the front municipal, uh, building doors. That has not been included in the budget. Um, also a trailer, um, to haul the lift and, uh, skid steer. We're going to try to figure out a, uh, something that is, uh, less expensive for building maintenance. Uh, that's not been included. Uh, they also requested a carport and storage shed for the South Marvin Building, that has not been included. Um, but a snow blower and, uh, has been included. We proved this winter we need those. Uh, insulation at the cemetery office, uh, has been requested and included in the budget. Um, but a, um, backhoe for the cemetery, um, then, uh, at one thirty, that has not been included. Um, also a request from cemetery for a, uh, different truck, uh, has not been included. Um, there's a pillow jack that was requested by vehicle maintenance. Uh, it was in this year's budget, it was not purchased, so it was not included in this year's budget. Um, animal shelter walls, if you guys remember, we have had problems with the coating and the item, and the material falling off there at the animal shelter. Um, this is, uh, is a best estimate that we can come up with at the moment. That has been included in the budget so far. Any questions on these items as we go through?
You know, if we buy that snow plow, we're not going to get any snow for the next five years.
Well, we've heard that the new dump truck and snowplow is, uh, very close, so we figure that will officially end the snow season when it comes in.
That sounds like a wise investment in it for not using snow.
Well, I have a question for our cemetery director, um, because I know this is the second, or the third, meaning I say it on the budget. Your backhoe, three years ago, was on its flat leg, is it, is it still just limping along?
The backhoe's been on the budget, requested for about seven years at this point.
Well, I've only been there three, so.
Right. Uh, it is getting weak. We spent several thousand dollars on it here a few years ago, replaced all the hydraulic lines on it. They are leaking again at this time. Uh, the rear seal had gone out of it, the motor, we'd replaced that. Um, it's getting weak, uh, it's to the point that if this goes down on us, I can't call Justin at Street Department and borrow backhoe to dig a grave, uh, because his backhoes are wider. Ours are a narrower backhoe than what he has. Our down riggers that come out are narrow, his are wide. So, at that point, we're moving headstones and everything if we had to use it to, to get in there. So, yeah, that's where we're at with it, so.
Point out, would it be feasible to contract for digging out, rather than?
No, it'd be very expensive right now for what we're, what we're doing and everything to have it contracted out. You'd be looking at ballpark, eleven hundred to twelve hundred dollars every time they came in to dig. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, please-
Plus the fact we're using it for snow removal, to where that Justin's crew doesn't have to come help us do snow removal. I mean, we're using it to fill, you know, low spots, ruts, and different things within the cemetery on a daily basis, just like today.
Now, um, that says if the committal shelter, then go to mini X at ninety thousand?
Right, so I threw out another figure in there to where that, okay, we'll spend a little money on repair on this backhoe, keep it up, and to where we can keep using it for other things besides digging the graves. Go to a mini X and things, and go that route if we're doing a committal shelter. Uh, that would help us out greatly there, but if we don't do the committal shelter either, uh, we're still at, right where we're at right now.
Okay, and when we, when we get to that committal shelter, I'd like to call you back up.
Okay.
Ask for a few questions on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Are you sure you need insulation? I can't just buy you a new coat, Roger?
What'd you say, drop the insulation and buy Roger a new coat?
Yeah, I said-
I asked him to be- I, you know, the, the office out there, it serves our needs very well for what we do, but I'm gonna tell you what, the last month has been-
Yeah.
I've gone home every day, and you can ask my wife, I come home and I'm cold every day, my feet are cold. That concrete, it's because it's on a slab, and all the heat comes out of the ceiling. And with the thermostat at seventy-five degrees, which I think is nuts, when you walk in the door, it's like, you, you hit it, hit it up here, but when you sit down at that desk and sit there for thirty minutes, doing paperwork at the desk, your feet and your hands get cold. So that's where we're at, and I visited with Doug through building maintenance on this, and he says it's lacking insulation all through the walls, and it's just, it's a little bit drafty in there.
Yep.
So that's why we're requesting that.
Okay. Yep. Anything you'd like to take a look at, click the button, or you want me to move on?
Put a hundred thousand in the drone, and, or, well, it doesn't make sense, never mind, just go on.
Okay. So some of our cost-sharing contracts, um, our emergency management, our current contract is at approximately, uh, the thirty-four. Um, they requested, uh, the director requested an additional thirty-one thousand, uh, so right now we have the current contract, we didn't include that. Um, the joint dispatching agreement, uh, the request was to raise that to, from three hundred thousand to three hundred and forty-six thousand, that has been included. Um, obviously, if we didn't have dispatch, we would have to look at something significant to pay people and equipment to do that. Uh, the Scott Choplin Festival, we moved that from ten to twelve, if you guys remember, that was also another request made during the, uh, budget presentations. We also have the, uh, Pettis, or Sedalia Pettis County Economic Development is included, the Whitman Area Leadership Council is included, the senior, uh, center support is included, and then the Christmas Parade Chamber of Commerce support is also included. Any questions or comments, or anything you'd like to see changed on those? Anything else in the general fund that you would like to discuss, or go back to? We can, if you can, but just anything at the moment?
Where's that, what, what fund is the committal shelter?
Uh, it's in the Capital Improvement Fund. All right, and moving on, we're gonna move to the Transportation Fund. So same, same, uh, revenues estimated in this with sales and use tax, so you'll see that, and that's, again, it's split into two percent increments. Any questions on that? So the personnel costs in, uh, streets, there was some, uh, requests for an administrative assistant, two labors, two equipment operator, uh, operators, and we didn't include those. Um, we had some, uh, different positions moved around, um, so it had changed that portion of the budget. So we left those out to keep this, uh, on where we were at manpower-wise. The wage rates are also the same percentages as you see in the other funds, uh, non-s sworn funds, with the COLA at one percent and the two percent set aside for merit. That's in streets, and also in alley and right-of-way maintenance. Any questions on those? Okay, non-personnel costs on the street department, we had a request for, uh, Meovision, um, and those, that's the data link, and then the traffic counters. Those are the, um, are basically car counters that you place out on the street. Um, we did not have those in there. The multi-function trucks, they are not in the Transportation Fund, as you can see here, that was moved to the Capital Improvements Fund. Uh, the macro paver was rated as number two, and it is included in the, uh, Transportation Fund. The four-speed loader, which is the loader that, um, uh, picks up the snow downtown, um, with the macro paver, we did not have that included in this year's, uh, budget. Uh, as well as the ride-on belly broom, uh, that's the broom that's used to sweep off the streets, like for different projects, or before they, um, pave a street. Uh, the mosquito sprayer, the current unit is unserviceable, it needs to be replaced, so that's included in the budget. Uh, items that aren't are digital signboard, um, uh, backhoe replacement for the concrete crew, which also had forks with it. Um, a goose neck trailer for the asphalt paver, uh, they're having a little bit of trouble with the low boy, uh, trailer having, causing some, uh, some damage, so they'll have to do a little bit different type of loading to continue to use that. Uh, and then an equipment trailer to haul smaller, uh, or haul attachments and smaller equipment, all of those items were not included. A forty-inch skid mill, a skid steer miller, um, this is, uh, what they use to mill up, uh, places on the street that they can't fit the big miller in. That is included, as well as a walk-behind street cut saw, uh, a couple of-
Are they, is that miller, it's got a separate power use on it, is that what that means?
It's powered off the skid steer hydraulics.
So, so it's the skid steer that's underpowered, not the miller, or is?
Uh, it was used on one of our old, uh, Bobcat skid steers, that did not have the same power that the newer skid steers that are-
So we're replacing a skid steer, not a street miller?
No, we're replacing the miller.
Okay, am I, I'm still confused.
The skid miller itself is underpowered in the high dollar, so the whole unit, the old skid steer that we had, was only rated at like sixty horsepower.
Right.
And probably, I think, like a hundred gallons of the mix. Our newer skid steers are designed at like a hundred fifty.
We've got the skid steer, we need to get, okay, I, I'm sorry, some man-
We have the, we have the skid coming out, it's just the wrong side, person's steering coming out. If we open our machines to them now, we'll, we'll create them.
Yeah, okay. We can trade them in? I mean, that number has got some trade-in value on the stuff that's undersized, we can't use anymore?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we also had a one-ton, uh, truck to pull some of the smaller equipment and fencing at the street department lot, uh, we have not included those. Uh, structure for sewer and wash pad to eliminate, um, INI, this is a, uh, something that we're required to do. Right now, we wash all of the stuff, the street sweepers, out at the compost facility instead of at the, uh, street barn, because we need to, uh, construct a new facility to wash them, so that we can be in compliance with DNR regulations, um, so that we can wash them out there with the other things. That washing out has to go into sanitary sewer, it can't just go out on the ground. Um, we also need to do a rough repair on the street, uh, storage shed, and then, uh, they are requesting a shipping container to store straw, things like that, that would need to be, um, kept undercover and away from flammable things.
How much straw do we have?
We got about six hundred available here.
So I could store some other stuff besides the straw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, there's a request for new tables and chairs for their break room, and we weren't able to fit that in there. Any questions about that so far?
I've got one.
Did you say?
Sorry, uh, Roger, we couldn't, could, we couldn't work with Roger and end up with a, there's a request for a backhoe, I thought in there somewhere. Could it be narrow, and could still be one that could end up being shared, going to the cemetery?
I think the backhoes are considerably different, that, that are used at the cemetery department than that are used at streets. I'm not a professional in that, though.
But you can't buy?
The, the backhoe's in cemetery, they're winged legs, in order for us to get through the next tunnel, like Dustin's, he was on the street a little wider.
I get it, but, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm asking Dustin is, could he justify a narrow one?
I, I honestly cannot, because of the stability factor, we're moving sidewalk, they're, they're, they're pulling up the concrete, and it's swinging over the road. So with that narrow or flat form, um, that possibly, that's the factor that we're-
We couldn't just put one on a diet?
Why are you looking at me?
Well, the chair, the, the bucket that they're using, our, the, the bucket, the narrow bucket, where we're not taking that much, is what he was picking up.
Okay, okay.
Well, I thought we had another question.
Yeah, on line fifty-six, new chairs and tables for the ba, break room. I think we need to click that in.
Okay.
Ms. Tina wants them.
I want it, yeah.
So is that a motion?
Well, I mean, you know, our, our workers work, I believe our workers work very hard, and so-
What's twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Motion to add in tables and chairs. We can, uh, look at other things, too.
Right. So motion's been made in second, that we add in, uh, line item number fifty-six for the tables and chairs for the break room. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So have, thank you.
Okay, we're, we're moving on to right-of-way maintenance, so we had a request for, uh, several different items. First was tracked excavator, that rated number four, and that would be trading in our current wheeled excavator. Um, that was not in there. Two stand-on mowers was, uh, requested, and that is included in the budget at seventeen thousand. Um, then we had a mini excavator, a utility trailer, um, a, uh, two skids, I'm sorry, mini skid steer, there are many people calling dingoes, a, uh, one-ton crew supervisor truck, a, and a, another truck initiative, so this would be like the multi-function truck. Um, those items were not included. Uh, shelving hangers, racks, and small tools, those were included in the budget, but, uh, we did not have the, uh, new office space and desk chairs included in there, in with the sanitation. The cost-sharing contracts that we have in the Transportation Fund, so there's the, uh, contract with Oates, and then there's the transfer to the airports, is to help fund the airport, as they, they're enterprise fund, but they're not completely funded. Um, and then transfer to the Capital Improvements Account. This is, uh, um, part of paying back, um, a couple of different things that we have from the Transportation Fund to the Capital Improvement. Any questions on that?
So the fifty-fifty split with sanitation for new office space, just a thousand bucks for both of them, to benefit both of them, same kind of principle as the chairs and tables, on line fifty-six? I, I'm trying to think about the, I can't, I've been at those offices.
It's a different facility, so it would be mowing and riding layer in one facility, one building, uh, three, some of the concrete, and all the rest of the project.
But you're reworking your office space?
They're working very good.
So it's basically five hundred dollars per building?
Uh, for the sanitation and mowers, you guys would be helping for, sanitation and mowers, uh, for-
Throw it in? Throw it in?
Throw it in. Need a motion to add line sixty-eight?
So moved?
Moved in second, that we add line sixty-eight, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any other questions on the Transportation Fund?
There was one, but I lost it.
Yeah. I can start back up at the top and scroll down if that helps. Just tell me when you're ready to move further down.
I think it was adding personnel, is what I believe it was. Add two laborers. Um, do you wanna elaborate on that?
Sorry, have we, are we fully staffed now?
We are fully staffed right now. Um, we're actually over by one, uh, we have a swing-in position over, we've moved over to the street department. We're actually working, having an interview at the station, because of the training period, it's about four or six weeks, and that turnover rate is pretty high now.
So we've, that's, that, to my mind, that's a pretty big improvement, actually, what we've had.
Okay, okay.
With staffing.
Uh, we'll release that question. Any other questions?
No, not this time. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Capital Improvement Fund. So again, same revenues expected, are, uh, two percent increments, and then we move into the different projects. So, uh, the multi-function trucks, we've moved this from the Transportation Fund, and that is, uh, included at the one point two five million, and that is, uh, five trucks, and again, those are multi-function trucks, and we hope to do several different things, and have the ability to, um, use them specifically for snow plowing, that's for certain, but, uh. Um, the police department storage facility, that was not included, the special response vehicle was included. Um, this is what, um, uh, we discussed earlier about the committal shelter, and currently it's in there at a hundred thousand. I believe that figure was obtained, um, in, in the discussion earlier about having-
Oh, I'll just discuss on that one.
Yeah, Jeffy wants to go up and explain it, sorry.
My question to you is that, for this one hundred thousand for the committal shelter, you're looking at a shelter that is enclosed, that's heated, that's air-conditioned, got water, and all of that in it.
Yes.
Can you go back and look at this, uh, committal shelter that doesn't have all of that in it, but still would protect folks from the elements?
Okay, that's-
Make it a three-site?
That's where I originally started, back in October, when we, uh, did the strategic planning presentations that I gave to the council then. We had a bid that came in, in the ballpark of around sixty-five to seventy thousand, uh, dollars, uh, is where that was at. That is basically an open committal shelter, to where we could close it just to break the wind, and things like that. No heat, no air, no restrooms in that, uh-
How much did you say that was, sixty-five to seventy thousand?
Yeah, it was around sixty-five to seventy thousand. And if we're gonna go ahead and close those walls in, and put a little heat and air in it, and a restroom in it, uh, you're gonna easily be at a hundred thousand.
We don't have a restroom facility out there now.
Not at all, not at all.
And this would be designed so that if someone was there?
During the, during the service, yes, where it would be opened up, that-
Or could it be open during business hours?
We could have it open during business hours to use, yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it open after, I'm not locked up every night, for sure.
No, I don't want it open after hours, to where the vandalism could take place.
All right, uh, 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 would this be a permanent structure, or one that you could move around?
Nope, permanent structure.
So you'd have the, uh-
What, what we would have is, is that the funeral homes or the families would come in, we would have a place to go to for that shelter, in that shelter, to conduct the committal service right there. That whether it's the minister that's doing the service and things, we're out of the elements, we don't have people standing right next to a grave. That a lot of times what we're seeing now is, we're doing open caskets, and if this is a casket, I've got people standing here leaning on the edge of this casket, that's sitting on a mowing device, it's an accident waiting to happen. It's either we're gonna have to back people up and get them away from it, and police that as we're doing it. Um, yeah, it's just an accident waiting to happen, and it's, I mean, we, we, you know, try to shore everything- Yeah, it's just an accident waiting to happen, and it's, I mean, we, you know, try to shore everything up as best we can, trying not to have it, you know, happen, but when it's inclement weather, a lot of rainy times, everything's soft. And you put that many people standing right around the end of the casket and all the way down the side of it.
I would like to request that you go back and look at that, and instead of having a shelter that's got the heat and the air conditioning and the water in there, look at one that's just gonna shelter from the elements, three-sided.
Okay.
Look at the.
Well, the figure that I have, it's, it was clear from back in the summertime, and they explained to me at the time when I asked for that estimate on it, that it's probably gonna go up a little bit, so I'll go back and we'll get a new figure this week or.
And do you remember what that square footage was, I'm sorry?
No, I don't right off the top of my head, I don't.
My concern would be if it's a hundred and five in the shade, it shows it's gonna be warm.
Well, my thought is, is if we do anything, we need to at least have electricity to it for that aspect that we could have ceiling fans running in it to move some air, and that way it's not quite as hot, so, yeah.
So how did you guys see services last week when it was crazy cold? Did you bring it?
We did one on Thursday morning, yes.
Outside?
Outside, full casket burial, very cold. Uh, my guys, it took us longer to get things set up for the fact that, you know, looking at the frostbite element and stuff with digging the grave and everything, we, basically we worked for about twenty minutes and then got in, out of it, and got warmed up for a little bit, went back and worked again. And you just have to look at that when the temperatures are down there below zero, the wind chill's on top of it, even lower. It just, we gotta work smart.
So then Roger, if we, if we did do this, all panels would be there or just?
Everything, and that would, and what we would end up doing is would have the funeral home go with us and transport that casket or those cremains to the grave site, and if the family wants to come and watch, it'll be done from a distance.
So it would be a policy that they have to stay?
Yep.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question.
So if we're gonna do that, I don't see it being anything other than hidden and cooled and a restroom?
Yeah, I mean, it just, the common sense, the common sense factor, and years ago I had to go to the Pettis County Ministerial Alliance and ask them to talk to all the pastors here in town and say, hey, you know, need to use our common sense when we do a graveside service out here. That we had one at a hundred and five one morning that lasted an hour. I ended up calling an ambulance because I had a person go down, yeah.
Okay.
That was my concern, is because it's hot, you know, it can be just as hot as it is just as cold.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can make a pretty nice shelter that is open and that, you know, is large enough on the roof area that to protect us when it is raining and blowing a little bit, and still have it to where we could close that off and break a little bit of that wind and not have to have the heat and air portion in it, would save us quite a little bit.
Well, if you would, go back and look at those numbers and see if you can bring us a lower number than the hundred thousand, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll bring you a new number, I'll make a phone call tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Okay, next item up is the aquatics facilities, and we've kinda talked about, excuse me, the campus. So this, this large figure that you see here, that is the loan proceeds that would be coming in to pay for the aquatics facility, the bowling alley, there's also, it appears it's gonna be a little bit more expensive than what we thought it was. That's included, the fire station, the training building, and the burn tower. So that is all included in that loan proceeds, makes sense, and that's all included in the budget.
Where does debt retirement show up on this?
On debt retirement as in the payment each year?
Yeah, yeah, because you borrowed nineteen million dollars, you know.
So the, I mean, the chances of us having to make that payment that first year is gonna be a lot less, but at this point, we don't have that completely in there, but we also have it included in the, because the loan and the, actually receiving the funds, if we get it in, because we've talked to them about possibly this fall to start the loan process and actually start receiving funds.
What's the increase in the bowling alley? Is it, what's the increase in the bowling alley?
Um, as we've been going through that process, and Amy might come up and give us a little bit more information on it and talk about it better, I've missed a couple of the meetings, but it's, it's just making sure that we get the right building, I guess it'd be a good way to say it.
So a lot of that is, we're working on the cost of the bowling alleys, you know, years before things go up, so cost is going up quite a bit, just all over. We really kinda thought sixteen, you know, sixteen millions, we're told, you know, around three million dollars for the bowling alley. But that, it's up quite a bit more, almost two million dollars more. Another piece of that is us moving esports over to the bowling alley, so there's more square footage on the building as well. So that's a piece, and then expanding, we're making it a larger, not just concessions, but it's like you could come in there, eat lunch and get hamburgers and waffles and fries and everything as well, so a larger concession stand as well. Any questions on the bowling alley, I'm happy to answer.
At one time, Ms. Heckard was gonna give the city three million.
And she, yes, and that's what.
And she changed her mind or?
No, she's still pledging the three million dollars for the bowling alley.
All right, so she, she wanted to keep that money and to draw it herself up, if I understand.
Oh, she would be making the payment on the bowling alley.
Pardon?
She would be making the payment on the bowling alley.
So that's the agreement as it is right now?
Correct.
Okay.
We're still on.
So it's just cost, and that's the one thing that's going up every year, it's just like, you know, we listed a playground three years ago and it was seventy-five thousand dollars and now it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So things are going up and that's part of it as well. Each year we wait and do things, it goes up a little bit more. But the other piece of that is making the building a bigger for our esports program, which is our biggest sports activity event that we have, and it's just trying to give that an actual home because we don't really have a home for it right now.
Tell them what the esports is.
So esports, it's gaming, it's video games. Kids actually can go to college and scholarships with esports and everything, so it's just giving our community something else besides, you know, baseball's not their thing, but esports might be.
It's huge, how many kids?
But it's huge, and we just don't have the space even at the Heckards to be able to do it.
I was gonna say, right now you're doing that at the Heckards Center?
Correct, we do, and we, staff puts it down, I don't, when I say we, it's not me, it's the staff that's doing it, but they're setting it up, taking it down, depending on the amount of time that they're spending being able, it would be nice for us to have a home for them, and the bowling alley is a great place for us to be able to do that, especially with the school right across the road, they can walk right over and be able to do the esports.
State Fair has an esports sporting, and they're number one and number two in the nation, so this is a good training ground for them.
It's a big deal, crazy, who'd have thought that that would be the biggest burger?
Any other questions?
So the pledge has not changed from three million to five million?
No, correct, the pledge is still three million dollars.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next item is the new aerial ladder truck that's on order, and that's included. The engine on order that's due next fiscal year, so we don't have that included, but that is included in our reserves. That's earmarked back to have in, have in the budget for when that comes in. Opticon, if you remember, this is the program that Chief Irwin talked about that has devices in the police and fire responding units that would change the lights to allow the unit to go through while they're running lights and sirens. That was included in it. The fire brush truck, that was not included. Now, these next few items are the storm drainage projects and several different projects that we have going on. So, and you're gonna see expenses, like for example, on the storm drainage project, the expense, and then grant revenue. If you remember, we took our SLRF funding, our ARPA funding, and those sources, and we have been building infrastructure with them, like with our storm drainage projects, and then we also have our north central sidewalk project, the expense, and then we also have grant revenue and local ARPA funding from that that are paying for those projects, which we do have some matched locally. Any questions on those? We also have the CDBG sidewalk program, and that is partially grant-funded, if you remember that. That's the program that is over between New York and Emmett, between Fourth and Fifth, to recreate that square of the neighborhood with sidewalks and guttering and hopefully revitalize that area. The, those are also all included in that. Any questions on those? It's always good to see the revenue coming in, right? Then on the next project is the sidewalk from State Fair Boulevard, Fifty Highway to Third to Sixty-five. That was not included due to the ranking, also, which was not included, a sidewalk on Sixty-five Highway from Seventh to Liberty Park Boulevard. But we did have the sidewalk repair and placement funding from a half million for our sidewalks around Sedalia. You know, we continue to repair sidewalks, and on our list, our repair list that our concrete crew continues to work on. We also have within the budget, the Washington Street Bridge repairs. We have a engineer estimate at about one point two million dollars for repair, and then the county infrastructure grant has pledged four hundred thousand of that.
Number forty-six, Washington Street Bridge repairs, the county was gonna come up with what? Many thousand dollars? Okay, so we need to still budget the million-two-hundred thousand?
Right, so what we've done here is, is this is the expense, and then underneath it, we have the revenue coming in to offset it.
Okay, I see that.
So we still have the total, the total amount that it, that it costs, because we will still expend that money and then get reimbursed for the four hundred.
Okay, I follow you.
Because we have not been reimbursed correct yet.
Not yet.
No, no, we have.
Well, I know that they had pledged two hundred before, and then they pledged some more, so we have not received any of that money that they.
We have not applied for any, we have not had the larger expenses come in yet.
Okay, thanks.
They will, I'm sure.
But they did tell us in their meeting that Steve and Rand and myself went to, and Jack was there, they did pledge us to, they said, trust us, we're gonna give it to you, so we put our trust into them.
Yeah.
Um, our street paving projects, which ranked, as you can see out to the side here, the ranking and what rank it was out of, out of the total. So the paving of Grand, Twentieth to Twenty-fourth, that also what we're rating on right now is is a water project that, actually that contractor was gonna start anytime, I'm sure the weather's probably delayed him with everything that's going on, but we, of course, won't pave the road until the water line underneath it is fixed. And then our, the project that we applied for with the infrastructure grant on paving was on Sixteenth Street. You know that section on Sixteenth from around Barrett West that's kind of torn up? It's that, and then from Ohio to New York, paving that, so you see the expense here.
Did you say Barrett West? I thought it was Barrett East, or Limit East.
What is Limit East to Barrett, yes, or Barrett West to Limit on Sixteenth?
I, in my mind, I had, I had it going east on Sixteenth.
It does from Ohio to New York. It does from Ohio to New York. So there is, there is a section that was paved by a contractor several years ago.
Right.
To approximately Beacon, Warren, Barrett, somewhere along in there, I don't have that exact, I can't remember off the top of my head, to Limit that we were going to pave, and then they had paved through the, well, ultimately it's kinda back to around Kentucky, isn't it? On Sixteenth Street?
Yeah.
Somewhere along in there.
Yeah.
So we're trying to, in sections, get.
The parts have haven't been paved.
Right, and Sixteenth Street in that area is one of the highest-traveled cities in Sedalia, and on the.
The reason I ask that is because I was driving eastbound the other day on Sixteenth, just east of Barrett, and it was in.
Yeah, that is the section.
That is the section?
That's portions of it, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, but.
Yes, that is the top section.
I would say it's down almost to Park, but you've got maps, you know where it was.
Right, right. So that shows the expense and then the grant revenue, and then, and those were included, then paving Emmett, Broadway to Tower was included, excuse me, and then, as you guys remember, the last presentation, I had talked a little bit about the roadway asset survey, and so in our conversation the other day with the mayor, we talked about putting this total in for macro paving, if we keep the macro paver in and allotting that, and what we would like to do is, is take this list of streets and what we have and the macro paving and try to obviously tackle as much as we can. That survey is supposed to give us a recommendation for the type of treatment that we will have on the road, so we'll take that, compare it to what we have here, and what our hope is, is to go further than what we expected because we hope to stretch the dollar further with that, with that macro paving. So again, that three hundred thousand is included, so when you see these other items here that aren't included, we hope to get to some of those because of the, and you can see in their ranking, they were the further down there, but we hope to get further and even onto other streets. And we, you know, we need to look at that again, at that roadway asset survey, compare it to what they, they found, traffic counts, that sort of thing as we look through it.
You know, we, of course, it's self-serving, Twenty-Sixth Street isn't paved and we're paving alleys, so.
Yeah, but you're paving alleys and it wastes.
Well, yeah, and you could do the same thing there, anyway, go ahead.
So Thirty-Second Street to Sacagawea, that's that Winchester extension, where it was rated in the amount, it was not included. The Mill Street Public Private Partnership with financing, in a developer agreement, that's included in there, and also that does include sidewalks. If you guys remember from the last council meeting, we had a zoning change, and the idea is that there'll be apartments built to the north of the new Pettis County Community Partnership. This also includes a sidewalk along Third Street. Then the Sixteenth Street in Winchester to Thirty-Second Street, building that road was not included. State Fair Boulevard and Main Street roundabout was not included. On ramps, well, on and off ramps at Main Street, which would be north, north side of Main Street to Sixty-five, that was not included. Building a road from Pro Energy to Oak Grove was not included. Sixteenth Street, a complete street from New York to Highway Sixty-five, that was not included, but we do have some pavement and some improvements there. Wayfinding signage was not included, we've gotten a grant for some of that. The bike way or in path through the TAP grant, that is included, and we also have grant revenue to help offset that cost. And then the final thing that was included and was ranked number two was the ERP system. If you guys remember, that was the, the system that handles all kinds of different data and also provides better service to the public by being able to have an app where they can pay their bills, permits, and all the different items that we went through during the presentation. And then here is that transfer of revenue from the transportation fund showing up as a, as revenue. Any questions so far? Any questions about the fund balance or where we ended up in that? All right, and the final fund, so if you guys remember, we have the Central Business and Cultural District that we have as a board. The board met the other night, put together a budget, and this is their recommendation. This is the projected revenues here on Sixteen through Nineteen. Um, and also something to look at is their, is their resulting fund balance with it, as it is also calculated here. Um, excuse me, the, uh, this gives their, this is an actual line-by-line budget for them as opposed to what you saw in some of the other, um, um, some of the other funds that we have talked about, where we've talked about specific, um, portions for each, or just decision items, I should say. So this is the entire budget. So there's legal and accounting, the property tax collection fees, MoDOT leasing fees, available, uh, property tours, building and grounds maintenance, the facade program, that's continuing on to help with, uh, like as a, a program to help businesses in that area improve their facade. Uh, downtown restrooms, um, public restrooms, uh, grant project for alley activation, uh, some banners and murals, and again, their wayfinding signage, some benches, excuse me, uh, an annual event, membership training, downtown maps, their office supplies, and then their specific event sponsorships for the Thanksgiving fireworks, Scott Joblin Festival, uh, the Christmas Parade sponsorship promotion, and the Wheelman Event, Main Street marketing, some contingent events, and then their branding and merchandising. So their fund still comes in, um, um, actually, uh, over target, so that's positive. Any questions on that one? As that was recommended by the board. So is there any fund or any, any portion of this that you'd like to go back through and, and look at tonight?
So we are, that, we're gonna get these restrooms done?
Um, I think that.
That's Julie here. That was part of the.
I believe that if I remember right, they have.
By the shelter, by the.
By the pavilion?
By the pavilion.
Yeah, there is, um, I believe that the reason that it's been chosen is there is a sewer line that we can tap into.
Well, that was part of what we agree.
Sewer and water.
With Frenell, too, when we did that, we were to provide that, I think, so.
So that is in the, is in the budget.
Good.
I believe it actually was in the budget last year, too.
I think it was, too, and it was in the budget the, maybe the year before that. We need to get that done.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
Fifty thousand in the CBDC, so we have to figure out probably at least another fifty thousand somewhere. Um, and so if you all want to put fifty thousand in the CIB budget, then we could do, do that.
You do?
Right.
You can.
Okay, I would like to add fifty thousand, so we'll get restrooms downtown.
All right.
Second.
A motion's been made in second that we add that revenue so that we can get the bathrooms downtown.
Where are they gonna be located now?
South of the pavilion.
I.
Along the building.
I mean. Along the pavilion or along the?
Along the pavilion.
Well, it's still the, that little alley. So we're in a bathroom on, is this?
We've got a fund balance.
In the.
No, there's a fund balance.
That gate has been.
There's not, it's not connected to the, um, not connected to the pavilion. But there is a motion in the second quarter.
Yeah.
So. We don't know how much it's gonna be, though, right? We're just guessing it's a hundred thousand dollars, it could be more than that.
And it could be less.
Could be.
And CBDC typically doesn't spend their whole budget anyway. Well, let's. You know, it's. Let's, let's put it in and, and make sure CBDC knows to, to put the plan together.
Yeah, so are you suggesting I go on the capital improvements side?
Why don't we get bids first and then see? We can always make a budget amendment if it's something that we want to support. Because I feel like this could be a lot more than we can, just giving them fifty thousand dollars, and we're not sure that they need that, is, mm, you know? I don't know if I feel great about that.
So right now, we have a motion and a second to put that fifty thousand in. So we're gonna move forward to vote on it.
Can I ask clarification, are you meaning bringing, uh, from the capital improvements account?
We've, we've got funds somewhere. This is what, they wanna have that fund balance, I think.
Can, uh, Councilman Robinson, can you explain what, what you were wanting, how you wanted that to happen?
Uh, we, beyond their getting it and being told they've got it, no. But if someone needs to get bids on it, I don't know.
You're gonna withdraw.
Maybe I'll withdraw my motion.
We're gonna withdraw the motion here and wait for it.
Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn, and we're gonna wait for bids and more information to come in so that we can move forward with that.
We, I mean, the chances of us having bids for that March through meeting might not be, might be, not be there. So we may end up looking at it from the standpoint of a, of a budget amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
All right.
We can leave the fifty thousand in there and then, and then.
Yeah, let's leave the fifty thousand.
We'll, we'll look at the bids and look at it from that standpoint.
Okay.
But, but how do we start transplanting processes with that? How do we tell them who?
I can, with, uh, yeah, I can let them know.
Get conceptualization started.
And they may already have something. I haven't, I, I mean, they, obviously, I didn't come into that when it was, uh, when it was going on. But, uh, um, I know that there's been discussion of it, and I think there's been some investigation into it. So we just gotta dig that information back up and get, get good bids and see, see what all has been done.
Rean made the point to me that, you know, what about the facility out, out at the, uh, the cemetery? But, you know, Mr. Frenell, we, that was a great partnership with us, for us, and, and he's the, is part of the deal. So we need to, I'd like to prioritize that to some degree. He's been real patient, hasn't said a thing. But, uh, and it would be a wonderful thing to have downtown, sir. Uh, it would add tremendously, so.
Um, at this point in time, I'm gonna ask that if there's any department heads here that would like to come forward and state your case for something that maybe we haven't looked at, that you would like for us to look at?
Reconsider?
Well, yeah, reconsider. Do you wanna come forward and?
Councilman, you'd ask about the drones for first responders. We could look at going down to one, if you all wanted to consider that. I would assume, just off the top of my head, it would be roughly half the price. Um, part of that is still the nine-one-one, uh, emergency nine-one-one dispatch system that we would have to tie into where we get nine-one-one calls immediately. So, uh, we could put those for the pilots to hear as nine-one-one calls come in, so we can get the drones going immediately. Also, we can get patrol units going faster if there's a supervisor that has access to that.
And that serves fire, too. Fire gets, that drone gets over fire, over a fire.
Yes, it would still, yeah, it would still share it between police and fire. We would just operate off one and have to look at, at where we would put it, so.
Was the, now I forgot, was the whole number a hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I believe it was, yeah.
The, uh, um, one of the things I, and I can't remember, we had discussed this at one point, because of the, we would reduce, some of the, the items are going to be an expense either way. And it was, we were, we were reducing the drone and the launch system is what we would be reducing if we cut it in half.
Yes.
We wouldn't cut the cost probably in half, it would just be the drone and the launch system. Is that a safe assumption?
I, I guess, my, you know, I, I would like to get it started, but I do not want it to be considered fully done. In other words, I would hope that, um, City Council would support it again in the following year. I.
And we, we can look at doing, I mean, it is still.
So I would, would we, would cut it in half and put it in the budget and put a hundred thou? What would, would you all afford half of a hundred and fifteen thousand going in this year?
I would, it may not be half.
Well.
It may be three.
Yeah, three quarters. Cause you still gotta take for the nine-one-ones. Cause they gotta have, they gotta three quarters. Oh, three quarters.
Okay, so that's, that's one thing that we could look at. Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
How'd you like that?
Oh, the fire chief is coming.
Oh, there it goes.
But that was half, half of that three quarters was yours.
So we talked a lot about training classes and sending training classes and all that. I would like you to reconsider my training in preparedness officer. If I had that person, a full-time person, full-time training chief and full-time preparedness officer, we could do more of our training classes in-house and we wouldn't have to send so many people out. I would just like you to reconsider that.
How much is it?
It's, it's, uh, like, the fourth one down, I think.
So I'll be real honest, I'm thinking that, as we looked at that, I thought that would be something that's coming when all the training facilities here.
Right, but the problem is, is that it's just not somebody you can pull off the street. It's somebody that you have to train to do that, and, and, and I have a number of personnel that I have in mind that would have the blood to be in that position. I just don't know if they'll wanna come off shift. So bringing somebody in, getting them trained up to, to the level that we, and su, level of certification, cause there, if, if there was somebody we pulled off the street, there's a number of certifications that they will have to get to be able to do live fire training, to be NFCA compliant, all of those things. So if, if, I thought you gavelled me.
I didn't touch you. You know if she gavelled you, buddy.
Yeah.
So that adding the fire training officer at eighty-five thousand, it's, that's just one?
That's one person to come in and, and basically, it takes over the entire training program. It takes over our preparedness for, um, working with EMA and the liaison for, um, preparedness plans, disaster plans, um, how we respond to, to fires, how we respond to downtown fires. It, it is an all-encompassing position.
Okay, could they do first aid and CPR training for?
Absolutely good. Absolutely good. The problem, I have an instructor that can do CPR. The problem is, Councilman, is that.
Nobody wants to kiss him, yeah.
The problem is, is that I have him so busy teaching the fire one and two class, I have so busy teaching classes and doing education. He spent all day after morning doing education with the new class, and it's not all day Friday. We are very, I mean, you, you get your hours early for us. We, we work very hard, and I just can't put any more on him. But yes, we could do something with a first aid and CPR class that we are doing for the community. That would be in charge of that, yes. So I'm, all I'm asking is that you reconsider it. I'm not saying you have to do it, but I would love for you to do that.
So can we handle that line item like we handle some of the other line items with, with savings underneath it so that we can see the net effect of that fire training officer?
I, I, I suppose you could, but.
If you listen, I.
Yeah, but, so we could, we could stop doing, we could stop. So we'd send people to the Revolution Class to take a lot of education classes and some hazmat classes. If I had an in-house instructor that was certified to do those, we wouldn't have to sit in the Revolution Class.
But we're really not gonna be able to do that this year. We can't count on that this year.
No, no, we cannot count on that this year. No, because I don't, because I honestly, I don't know how long it would take to hire somebody to do that position. It, it may take us a couple of months to get somebody hired, get them in, get them certified and all of that.
All right.
So remember next year, when I.
No, 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 this is, this year.
When he, when he comes next year, don't let him have it, okay? Cause he'll have a fire training.
So anyway, I would, I would appreciate if you reconsidered that, that position.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Girl, here comes that Walter.
On this, uh, in our capital, our general fund wrote on this, on the cemetery transition crew leader. Uh, where I am at right now with this, this is Mike Holman that has retired back in June, and trying to keep him on board, uh, in order to train a new young crew leader that's twenty-four years old, just became a new father here a few months ago. And, uh, I've got two of my guys on staff right now that have been here just six months. So not having the knowledge to, uh, help us, and the other one's only been here a year, uh, and things. So that's kinda where I'm at. Uh, he's doing a great job in learning things within the cemetery as far as being able to do what I do when I'm out of the office. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure at this time that, uh, that's gonna happen without having Mike there to oversee the transactions that's going on. So, uh, if we look at this, uh, the, the numbers that's here, that's for a full year. Uh, even if we would back it off to a half a year, give me six months with him, that might get us to where we need to be. So if you would look at that, maybe consider doing something along that line.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a couple things that I'd like for you all to reconsider as well.
You want more trucks, don't you?
Uh, no, so the, I actually have three things. Uh, the Meovision Data Link and Meovision Scout Traffic Counters. Um, those are very important for, for a lot of the decisions that we make for signage, um, as far as staying up to date with MTC standards. Um, these traffic counters get a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree angle of each intersection that we're doing traffic counters on right now. That's for one unit. If we deploy what we are currently using, those are tube style, we have to deploy up to eight to be, to be able to get a, an accurate count on our intersections. Um, so this is a, a deal that goes out on a post. It's, it's out there for twenty-four hours, and it gets twenty-four hour readings for four-way intersection. Um, and then the, the Data Link itself is for downloads and my, and my video and, uh, transfer of data.
You're asking. Downloads, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, we have to download the information from the cloud.
These, 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 and, but, you think they need sixty thousand dollars of equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
So you need two. Could you get by with one, or do you definitely need to have the two?
I could, I could get by with one of the units, um, but that would, that would, we would only be able to do one intersection at a time at that. So two would be better than one, but one would be better than not.
How many intersections are you usually doing counts on at the same time?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I'm sorry, I have a yucky cold. How many intersections are you usually doing counts on at the same time? Is it frequently that we have multiple intersections that are being counted?
Yes, um, it is, it is frequent that whenever we're doing an intersection, um, we're doing three in a row or, or in a broad area, um, just to encompass, um, different, um, additions and, and add-ins to that one intersection.
How often are, so how often are we using the, the counts?
At this time of year, we are not able to do it because of plowing, so, and that's with our current system. If we had this, uh, scout system, we could do it year-round. Um, but let's just say from March to November, um, a good average would be five to six a month. We try to leave them out for a minimum of two weeks so we can get a full, full count. Um, in order for, for us to get true traffic counts, um, we should be cutting the tubes in half and only doing half of the intersection or half of the driveline. Um, but people drive around them, so we have to get four lengths out. And then, again, that's what I'm saying, we have to, we have to place all of them out there and then do the division and the math and figure out who's coming from where and going what. So with these, this is all be digital, it will get, um.
So it would be actually very accurate.
Yes, a hundred percent accuracy. Um, so there we give, uh, foot traffic, uh, bicyclists, they will tell the difference between a semi, uh, truck and trailer, or a little car. Um, with our current system right now, it just says automobile. And that's, I don't know whether it's semis, truck, car, SUV, motorcycle, it doesn't, it, it won't tell the difference.
So if you had the, the specialized data showing all these different things, then how could you do it? How would it help your job?
Um, it would help us with having true counts for, for any kind of sign requests that we have to put out, any kind of grant processes that we have to apply for.
The grant, grant request?
Yes.
Lifespan on it, approximately?
For that.
Lifespan?
Uh, five to ten years, um, depending. Um, the company that we talked to said that there's a lot of people that are running them for about fifteen-plus years. Uh, our current tube systems are, we're lucky if we get, um, a year or two out of them.
What, what are the costs of those, do you know, off the top of your head?
Our tubes are around five thousand a piece.
And they last a year?
A year or two. Um, and then plus the other, the other side of that, too, is, um, our, our software for the tube system, we're having a, kind of an issue with getting, um, things to jive together. Um, we're looking at trying to condense that down, and this is kinda the way to do, to move forward, uh, being able to go cloud-based as well. Uh, the other, the other request that I have for you to look at is the equipment trailer to haul, um, the paver, the goose neck trailer to haul the paver. We currently do have a lowboy with a semi. Um, we are unable to modify our lowboy trailer for the paver to come off of. Um, this lowboy that we have will haul our, um, our Miller, um, but it will not haul our paver, um, properly. Anytime that you take it off of the, the lowboy, whenever it breaks, the plane, it's slamming down onto the screed. Um, screed replacement is about thirty-five thousand. Um, and currently, right now, we do have a warped screed, um, that we're, we're probably going to be able to fix, so.
Okay, and what was that number?
Is it forty-seven? Is that the number that you're talking about, number forty-seven? Goose neck trailer, asphalt paver, lowboy trailer, daylight, just like that, forty-five thousand?
And that is, that is very expensive for a goose neck trailer. And that is, that is very expensive for a goose neck trailer, but it is specifically designed for a paver. It is a split deck, it's a long ramp, it's tandem with duals, air ride, I mean, it's, it's a, it's truly a heavy-duty trailer.
Have you looked for use with?
I have not, no sir.
Do they, do they exist?
They do exist, people tend to hang on to them though because they're-
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else with a wish list?
Don't you move, Chief, don't you move.
So let's, are we gonna put these in and see where?
So my- my thought is, is we can come back and we can, obviously we can put those in, uh, for you and show what they are, we can-
Just do it at the next, next meeting.
Whatever you wanna do, wanna do it at the next one.
We wanna put it in and look at the, at it-
The Meovision, some of these ones here at the end are easier to put in.
Okay.
Um, unless we, um, and I mean, I can put them in now and you can see the, just see it, have an idea of it, with that, those two, and then-
Can you highlight them when you put them in so we see next meeting what we, what they are?
Oh, see, like, uh, colored-wise?
Yeah, I was just thinking, it'd be easier, we could look down and say-
What color would you prefer?
I like a mauve color.
Okay, mauve. That's mauve, boy.
I'll see what I can do.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
Okay, yeah, if you would just put that in and then, uh, present it to us at the next one.
I do have the, those in there now, uh, the- the last two. Gives you an idea, but we will have them for you to discuss.
Any other discussion?
The only thing I had left was just, the, uh, last- last part is, is, uh, we will review this again on March the third. Uh, there is a public meeting that is scheduled for any input, uh, and then, uh, on the seventeenth, I'm sorry, is the public meeting, the next, is at the next regular council meeting, we're gonna review the items that you've, we've discussed tonight. Make any more changes then, uh, and it'll be a public meeting on the seventeenth. And then the plan is to hopefully adopt the- the budget for the seventeenth, because if you go beyond April, there's some- some issues that we will have. Uh, but if additional time is needed after the seventeenth, we can schedule some special meetings. Hopefully we can get there on the seventeenth.
Okay, so you're saying that you're gonna prevent the revision at the-
The third.
March third?
March third. We usually would do a, um, a, uh, kind of another highlights, if you will, of it. All righty.
Any other questions?
All we have.
All done?
All done.
Give me a motion to adjourn?
We're so moved.
Motion's moved and second, so we wrap this meeting up, all in favor? Any opposed? I have it, thank you.